Work session for June tenth to order. I have note we have a quorum and Eric is on teams. First item is sixty-two McKinley Road for a subdivision. All right, Eric, can you see that?
Yes, I can see it.
All right. All right, go ahead Tyler.
Uh, I don't know much prepared here beyond what's planning flagged for me, which is a little discussion about the sewer easement. But generally, it's a point three nine acre lot on a corner of McKinley and Coolidge. Uh, I'm looking to subdivide it basically by cutting it in half with a decent number of variances. Planning suggested that these rear setback for the, uh, for the existing plot of land, uh, might not need a variance because it will actually be relative to both lines and going towards the corner. But, um, there visually seems to be plenty of space to put another dwelling i- in the proposed lot. And the footprint of my lot has been superimposed in the buildable space on the proposed lot. Uh, just to give a sense that similar sized dwelling and similar characters possible. I, uh, I gather the nature of this committee is just to ask more specific questions about things like utilities, uh, safety, uh, fire access, and, uh, and those type of things, but, but hopefully you all can guide me a little further.
Right, I think one question is the sewer connections for proposed dwelling and the existing dwelling, you're proposing a sewer easement. I think public works can provide feedback on how you want the connection to go to the new dwelling. This is the existing connection.
They would need a separate connection.
Right.
Totally separate. Same thing.
Wrong. From McKinley?
From McKinley. No, from Coolidge.
There is a sewer main on Coolidge.
Yep, but there's one on McKinley too, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, but the new house is facing McKinley.
Wouldn't have a McKinley.
But does that, so when I was looking at it, it looked like the sewer pipe ended there. It doesn't show the sewer line going all the way up to McKinley. So would they have to angle through that other lot? Or is that just wrong?
The existing house already has a sewer pipe.
Right, but the new house.
Would just go to the sewer pipe just downhill where.
And then.
So utility wise is not a problem.
One off McKinley and one off Coolidge. Or both off Coolidge.
Old sewers would be off Coolidge. The water service is off McKinley for the existing house. The house would have to go off Coolidge.
Okay, so you wouldn't want them to, they wouldn't need to move that existing service to the existing house. That's what we were wondering, if they need to move it up to McKinley. Okay.
No. He's moving to be fine with us, we don't care.
I think it'd be a good idea. But, you know, it's not necessary.
Not necessary.
That way for a reason, it's downhill that way.
Yeah, all right.
Better flow or something, direction.
It's probably, yeah. Sure they did that for a reason.
Got it.
The existing sewer goes right into the manhole, is that common?
No, it's not common, but it's not.
Been working with her this long.
It's not horrific either.
Oh, that's fine. It's not something we do new.
Right.
Uh, and just to be clear, I'm not proposing to build anything on this proposed lot. That's for whomever buys it. So they would be coming back to you for, for all necessary requirements.
They wouldn't even have to come back here at that point. Cause a single family home wouldn't even be in front of this board.
They just need to sewer connection from DPW and.
Driveway permits.
Driveway permits.
The easement for the existing sewer. They're proposing easement.
Yeah, they need that, yeah. And that tree is gonna stay, that, there was only one tree on the lot, it looks like that big maple, a couple shrubs, but there's no, you're not cutting the trees down on the very back of the lot. Where it says stockade fence, it looks like there's a tree, but maybe that's on the neighbor's yard.
So stockade fence on the south side of the property. We'll see where the pin actually gets put in. There's no existing rebar there on the southwest corner. Uh, the surveyor's gonna have to put a new one in. Uh, it's possible that there are some medium sized maples that, uh, I, I wouldn't propose to remove them. I think I'm pointing them out as, uh, good interference between the lots. Same thing on the western, uh, side of, uh, the proposed lot. There's some ten foot tall shrub type trees.
So there's really no site work proposed?
I'm definitely not proposing anything. Uh, I don't have the capital to build a whole nother house, especially these days. But, uh, the neighbor just to the south wants to, so I think it's gonna be his game.
Is this your home, the existing dwelling, is that where you live?
Is this, yeah, that's my home, that's my permanent residence.
Got it. So if that's the case, should they, should they be seeking a waiver from the subdivision? Needing a bond for the subdivision?
I don't think so. There's not.
They don't need a bond.
There's nothing to bond, I don't think. Just as, just as subdivision, just to split.
Yeah. Are you gonna remove this pavement?
Yeah, so the existing garage straddles that subdivision line. Uh, I'd be removing a fair amount of impervious there so that pavement all the way back to the edge of the relocated garage.
Oh, all this, okay.
Yeah.
So that should be shown maybe on your existing conditions plan or proposals. You have an existing conditions plan and then have this, and then indicate what's gonna be removed.
I'll, uh, I'll clarify that pavement a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be helpful.
Okay.
Do they need to, do they need to demo the garage before they're playing mortal approve the split? Cause then you'd have a garage on somebody else's property.
Yeah.
That's my next question. So where's it, where's it now?
I would say if you're gonna subdivide it, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do the garage at some point, or maybe there's a, maybe we can do it through a, some kind of deed restriction or something like that, I don't know, we'll have to figure that out. There might be a way to leave it until he sells it, but I would think you're, eventually you're gonna have to demo the garage as it showed on the plan.
Could it, could it be a condition precedent?
Condition precedent, uh, or he. It could be, although he might not want to, he might wanna keep it there. He could put it, he could give yourself an easement for it. If he wanted to keep it there.
Lot works, gonna sell pretty quickly, I would imagine.
I would imagine, yeah.
Might just wanna get on the demo permit.
I would say it's probably the smartest thing to do, I just don't wanna, you know, I don't know that we can force you to do that.
You're planning on building a new garage regardless?
I'm just gonna move the existing one.
Oh, you're gonna lift it up and move it?
Yeah, I've put enough money into it, uh, it's just sweat and labor, figured should hold on to it. Uh, but a new foundation, uh, a new slab there. I'm figuring that the right time to move it is after the variances are approved though.
Yep.
Otherwise, you have to go to the, you have to go to the zoning board and then come back here for subdivision approval.
Yeah.
Yep.
So maybe it's a condition precedent, uh, before you can record the subdivided lot, you move the garage.
That sounds right, I think.
And then, cause they'll have all their variants.
And record the sewer easement.
And record the sewer easement at the same time, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Those two things.
Yeah.
Okay, so I gotta clarify the pavement a little bit better. And, uh, move the garage after variances, but before the subdivision and record the sewer easement.
And if you get the variances, you should apply for driveway permits a- after that too, after you're done with all the variances. You're gonna need a driveway permit for that one. I guess the new owner could.
So you can't, just to be clear, you can't give yourself an easement. So in your conveyance easement, when you sell the lot, you have to reserve your sewer easement in that document. Understand, it can't be before, it has to be at the same time. So I would say we just need to review the deed and make sure that the sewer easement is in the deed and the order of recording is in the, right, because the the sewer easement's gonna be in their deed, not your deed, and you can't give yourself an easement. So you can't create the sewer easement first and then sell the lot. You need to do it all at the same time.
Gotcha.
Can you say what you said one more time?
What he said, basically.
It's like, I heard one sentence and then it was clarified a little.
Okay.
All right, yeah, so next step is going zoning board.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Where, where do these map lot numbers come from?
Um, can you put it on the screen?
Two six eight slash twenty-six one and then two six eight slash twenty-six. Were those given to you by the assessing?
On the new parcel.
Uh, so that doesn't exist yet, that's, um, that's the surveyor.
Yeah.
Two six eight twenty-six is the original lot.
You should check with the assessing, make sure they're okay with that.
So you should just delete the one on the new lot because assessing will assign you a number. He shouldn't be putting the number on the plan.
It's good to know.
It's fine having it on your part of the lot, that's fine. You should not show it as a separate number.
Got it. Thank you.
There's, um, o- only issue that's been flagged with, uh, other nearby properties that have subdivided like, uh, Wacha, which is across the street, has been, uh, impervious space and water drainage. Do you all see any issues here?
I guess not until additional impervious surface or other actual changes are made.
You need to confirm that both lots are gonna meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And if they're not, if you're gonna shrink that lot, you're obviously, you're sealed surface, open space number's gonna go down for your lot because your house didn't, isn't going away. So you need to confirm that you're gonna meet the zoning ordinance, so you don't end up being a violation of your own lot.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Making it nonconforming.
Cause you might, you might end up, you might, you need to look at it because you may be able, you might have to lose your garage because it might be over your sealed surface, you might not get the garage.
I think he's okay.
Ask for a variance for it.
They were good on that one, but the other two variances on the lot are, are questionable. Especially how that corner works on the rear.
If you look at it roughly, it looks like you're okay on the existing lot. Should be able to build on the new lot, but that's a good point, you should definitely check all that, double check all that. And then the question about this, if you have a lot of impervious surface and stormwater becomes an issue, then you're gonna need a stormwater permit, right? Or some kind of treatment for the stormwater, preferably. So maybe a porous driveway or a rain garden or something like that to capture the stormwater so you're not sending it out onto your neighbor's property or in the street. So you're good, if, unless someone else is doing the whole site plan on the neighboring lot, then they'll have to look at it.
Okay.
But those are conforming setbacks, you show them on the new lot, right?
Yes.
The, the, yeah, footprint, lash lines, yeah.
Right, yeah. The proposed building area.
Yeah, it's lot area per dwelling unit was the nonconforming, I forget what the other couple were.
Uh, they're in the bottom right. It's, uh, setbacks need done a hundred five rather than seventy-four point three.
Yeah, you have to go to the BOA and then come back here.
Hopefully see you on the other side. Appreciate your view.
Julie and her staff, if you have a BOA application you have questions about.
Yeah, sounds good, uh, is Steph back in office?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah.
Cool, she, she had the first look at it, so that'll be fun to see her again.
Yeah.
Got it, uh, anything else?
That's it.
That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, take care.
All right, next up.
Uh, good afternoon, John Chegan from Haley Ward. Presenting the applicants here, Robert Snowberg and, uh, Darcy Davidson. And, uh, to my right, so Anne Whitney Architect is with us. So this is a subdivision as the one was before, this is an existing lot at Humphreys Court. It has fronted on two streets, so that exhibit that you have up there now is the, is a subdivision plan from, uh, many years ago that, uh, sort of set up the neighborhood. And, um, I think that's nineteen hundred, I believe. And then the next is the current tax map and, uh, basically the lots from that subdivision of, are outlined in the, in the black and they all were developed uh, in accordance with the plan except for the lot that the Snowbergs, uh, Snowberg Davidson have purchased, which is right there next to the arrow, where there was a house built right in the middle of that lot. So what they'd like to do is subdivide the lot. Uh, included in the package are two buildings that, um, Anne Whitney prepared and basically this one here is, uh, version one and it has a joint driveway, so there's a joint driveway, uh, at the corner. And if you look at the next one, which is version two, um, each lot has its own driveway separated. The property line is the same in both versions. And then the next plan is an existing conditions plan, so it shows you the, um, pavement which does encroach, um, that's sort of the old corner's been, um, cut for many years, but, uh, house kinda sits a little bit high. Although on the, um, north side, it accesses up the road to a lower level. And then the next, uh, plan is the proposed property line. So this, um, interestingly enough, uh, I think meets most of the, uh, requirements, if not all, the existing lot is a ten thousand and five square feet in a five thousand square foot per lot zone, eighty feet of frontage is required. So the, uh, lot one has eighty feet of frontage. Obviously the lot two has more, each lot has five thousand square feet. The only oddity is the, the angle of the lot line, obviously, so, um, we also need to get with the department on utilities. And, uh, we're here to talk about this, uh, concept form and see if you had any recommendations or thoughts, comments, I think we do need to come here cause every subdivision goes through tax, so we would make an official application. And, um, we would look to possibly submit that in the next cycle. I don't think we need any relief for anything. Zoning board.
Yep.
So we'd be coming back based on your feedback today.
This is the lot right here?
Yeah, he just, he drew that.
Driver comes in at that corner?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all, and, uh, you can see the property line comes out into the street.
Our proposed lot two, fronting left side of the page here. There is currently no water sewer main on that dogleg part of, of Humphreys Court. That may cause an issue for, I guess, this layout for water and sewer service.
So, uh, yeah, if you could share some of that data with us, that'd be.
Yeah, I've got it printed on, I can leave it with us in this meeting.
So I guess the, um, there is a lot right there to the left, that, lot twenty-seven, that must go into the sewer and water from the Humphreys Court, um, that goes east west. But what about that structure that's below there? That's on the bottom page left, garage, that's just a garage, right?
Yeah, I believe that house is, uh, new castle.
The half of the new castle half, yep.
Oh, I see, so it's, the house fronts another street and then that's just the garage in the back.
Yeah.
Yep, that, uh, that sewer's going the other direction too, so there's no sewer in front of the sewer is on the garage side of the lot, the existing garage, only. And the water kinda stops down the street a little bit. Some water service coming off of that hydrant connection. So if they allow this subdivision, you'll need easements across that lot for the other lot because there's no utilities to serve it on that side.
Okay.
And obviously the driveway is nonconforming, so you don't need leave from the driveway rules.
Distance to intersection, right?
Forty feet, yep.
And that's, I think, a planning board waiver?
To clear from the subdivision, or is that a DPW driveway?
There's not really a huge second there.
Currently, no, it's kind of curved, but the curve goes over the property, went to the applicant's property.
So you, are you looking at, uh, something up there, so?
You wanna, uh, show the building plan, uh, Peter, if you know what? Or Eric's?
Which one, this one or the?
Well, that one has two driveways, kinda, uh, one driveway for each lot and that one uses the corner for a joint driveway.
Okay, I think I like the two things better.
You like the two driveways better?
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the subdivision regs also call for right angled lot lines when you're subdividing.
Right, right.
And there's no way to do that here? Odd shape. And with the topography, you need those retaining walls to do it? Like a lot of challenges with that construction. Just building the lots to make them work.
Yeah, I know we met a couple times about this, did we look at this?
Yeah, although I, I just put a diagonal from.
Right, okay, I remember that. From the point.
Right, and it had to be adjusted a little bit to get the right size. Uh, and then meet the current dimensional requirements. You know, the previous subdivision only had fifty feet of frontage on the lots, or one of the lots. So to get the eighty feet is what makes that, uh, a diagonal property line versus a ninety degree property line. But that allows.
How long is the left, the left leg on Humphreys Court?
So the left side on Humphreys Court is a hundred and four feet. So if you were to divide it in half, you'd have like two fifty foot.
Yeah, but what if you did a s- an eighty, eighty foot, you'd be too narrow on the other block. That is the problem.
It wouldn't be a ninety degree lot line, the only, you know, said, the only.
It wouldn't get the lot conforming, yeah.
It's gonna have conforming lots with, with a perpendicular line would be a frontage variance.
Part of the reason is also the, the topography of the lot lends itself to trying to access on the low part of the lot in terms of driveways. Kinda maximizes the yard space for both properties by doing.
By going in from the low, low side.
What's that?
So where are the houses gonna be situated?
Um, if you go back to that version two.
Right up against the road?
Uh, that one's on the five foot and actually the outer line is where the roadway is, um.
So that shows the five foot setback?
Yes.
Yes, that's right on the setback, setbacks are shown on that plan. And the other one, um, you know, brings the driveway in on the other side.
This is a double driveway scenario, right?
Yes.
Why are the stairs going out in the driveway?
Well, um, which, which.
Or lot two?
It's the.
It's the.
On lot two, the access, you're gonna come into a garage and then go up into entering the house.
So where it says driveway is actually a garage?
No, that's.
Here's the garage.
The footprint shows the garage.
Oh, 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 got it.
So both, both structures are two story and the garages are at the lower level.
All right, what's that, well, center line that runs and it keeps on going towards the northeast? Yeah, that's center line, go to the right, Peter, right to, to the left.
That's the property line, I think.
Oh, is that the dead center line, the property line?
Yeah, the center line, and then you got the two setbacks. So you can see that the houses fit in the setbacks.
Yeah, I should've had the, um, property line being the darker line, but the, the width there is the two ten foot setbacks.
Right, okay, I see. And then the, the left hand driveway delineation, driveway delineation, I guess, um, it runs all the way down to the north of the property, it keeps on going.
Well, that's cause.
Oh, south, south property, sorry, Peter.
Yep.
Keeps on going, way down over, bottom right?
No.
Yeah, that, that line, that dotted long dash, what is that line?
That's a setback.
Propose, okay.
Here's the proposed lot line.
But I was trying to develop the buildings.
And then this is the setback.
Okay.
Have those setback lines on there.
It just happens to line up.
So your stairs are into, they're approaching over the setback?
Yes.
I guess, right, okay.
Yeah, only two, only two of the twelve lots in this neighborhood meet the current, uh, dimensional, well, dimensional requirements, you know, setbacks and lot size. When this is subdivided, now there'll be three, these two lots and that one other. And right now, our lot and one of the lot out of the twelve are the only that meet dimensional requirements. So in the subdivision, it'll still meet dimensional requirements, so. So in the subdivision, it'll still meet dimensional requirements, so.
And that original lot layout you saw, you don't think that would be a better layout and then you
Well, it doesn't have the eighty feet of frontage.
I understand, but it's the original layout and it kind of makes sense neighborhood wise in terms of the right angle lot layout that the subdivision envisions. And you have that original layout.
The access.
You're gonna need a variance for the stairs?
The access on that south lot then would be up. To get a driveway in there, you'd be going up about six feet.
Well, you'd have to cut out the hill.
We'd have to cut out the hill.
Aren't you cutting out the hill on, oh, only on the double driveway plan? On the single driveway plan, you don't have to cut out the hill, is that the plan?
Actually, neither of them we're cutting. We're gonna be cutting a little bit because that low part of the, go back to the topography, there's better access on that um
Two boxes from the corner, the
From the corner and from the the southern, I mean, the northern portion of Humphreys.
On the lot one, which is the right side there, there would be a driveway that would go up. It would cut in a little, there'd be a little retaining wall on the on the east side.
Is that retaining wall gonna be a structure? Do you need a setback from the lot line? How big a retaining wall are you gonna build?
Uh well, let's see, I gotta be reminded of the rule, right? Is it three feet or less?
I don't know.
Four feet.
Four feet, I think.
Four feet from the bottom of the footing to the top of the wall. Because four feet from the bottom of the footing to the top of the wall is considered a structure. So if it was gonna be encroaching on setbacks, you'd need a variance for that as well, for that and for the stairs as part of the second option.
Three foot nine, you don't want from the bottom of footing to the top of the wall.
So the two driveway plan, if you can keep the retaining wall below the structure height, you may not need a variance, but on the other plan with the stairs, you need a variance.
Well, no, the two driveway one, unless she can redesign it.
Oh, that's the two driveway one, excuse me, sorry.
The stairway.
Yeah.
Yep.
Encroaching.
On the one driveway one, same thing?
Uh yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, same thing.
Actually, yes.
So you still need a variance.
Yeah. But the um uh the subdivision part, I guess it's sort of a chicken and egg, you know, they could redesign the house. They haven't settled on the final designs and there's two lots and they're only gonna have one, so.
I don't know, though, if you have subdivision for a nonconforming lot.
Well, the lots conform.
And not when you subdivide them.
Yeah, they meet furniture area.
Oh, okay, so if you don't show the plan of how you're gonna build it.
Right, if you do the building later, I mean.
Let the buyer beware.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's it's a they're gonna build on one lot, so why should they design two? Because then the buyer of the second lot says, well, I'd like something different. But anyway, uh we do have the utility question, right? So that you have some form of an easement at some point.
For sure, yep.
The water stops, like the sewer, there's a sewer manhole shown there.
Yep, there's a hydrant across the street.
And the hydrant across the street.
I don't see it on your plan, but there is one.
All right, so it looks like you could almost
That's where the water line stops.
Okay. This looks like you could pull those and get them into that lot two. Because it does have in this, you know, layout, it's got ten fifteen feet of frontage, so you almost like you could make it without an easement to serve that lot.
What's that? With the hydrant, was it? I can't, I can't tell what that is. That's a utility pole, right?
I think it's a utility pole.
See that sewer manhole there, right there? And then below that, there's some frontage that is part of lot two.
Yeah.
That you could potentially bring out the sewer and the water.
Can't go in the sewer manhole, you know that.
Right, but just downstream of it.
Yep. And the water, but the water line definitely is gonna need some magic.
Yeah.
Yep.
Unless, you wouldn't want the same trench, gotcha.
And there is no stormwater system on that street.
Well, you can see the hydrant.
Yeah. So you're gonna have to deal with the stormwater.
You going? Going over here?
Yeah, there. That's where the water line ends?
Oh, that's the end of the water line?
Yeah.
So does it show this house feeding from that? Or does it show the services?
Really the only way it could be fed, but we don't have that.
Doesn't show the services either. Probably has a card somewhere because I don't know that that house is.
It has a card.
What is that? Fifty forty?
I'm sure we know what it is.
I think it was later, um sixties maybe?
Sixties? Was Harold Whitehouse's place?
You know.
You know.
Been there.
Of course you know.
By right duplex.
Elwin Park, when did Elwin Park get developed?
You know, you could build a by right duplex there, right, a two family. It's not any variance.
Yes.
Yeah, we just, we felt two single families fit better with the neighborhood.
You could act, yeah, I mean, you could do a condo too, right? It wouldn't have to be.
You could do a duplex on a single lot, yep.
You could, you can have two structures though on a single lot.
Not in the GRB, that would be a variance.
So it'd be a variance.
Two separate structures.
Yeah, I think we talked about that.
But if they were connected
They could be connected with some bricks, yeah.
That would be by right.
Connecting deck.
I think it would have to be conditions, space. Making sunroom spaces, yeah. But it it gets you back to the driveway. The if we
Right, if you had two driveways.
It would be good to have separate driveways for that duplex. And now I think you would need a relief for a lot with two driveways. Is that, would that be planning board? Or zoning board? Zoning board.
BOA.
BOA, yeah.
Does any of the city right away go over the corner of their property?
Well, no, it's not right away. It's their property.
It's paved, it's paved, isn't it?
It's definitely paved.
Yeah.
It's definitely driven over by the public.
When was the original lots merged?
Probably when you you built it or something. I don't know what the history is before that. I mean, it's a long time from nineteen hundred to nineteen sixty or whatever.
Right.
It's a ballpark.
When were they merged?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
You said early nineteen hundreds?
That was the subdivision created two lots there, right?
Between nineteen hundred and nineteen sixty, it sounds like.
Right. Probably when the house got built, but who knows if if, you know, they bought two lots or if it was in one family or, we don't know who merged it.
No.
Oh. Yeah, so you are you are you getting at the unmerger thing? Yeah, it's going in a different direction, just unmerge it. There's a house on it now, so what happens is
It's gonna not start until we go to HTC, right?
No, you don't get to unmerge if there's a construction on both lots, like especially when the house crosses both lots.
So I mean, have you guys approached HTC at all, like a work session about demolition?
Uh no, we haven't started with that.
Because even if there were a subdivision, before you record, you'd have to get rid of the house, right?
Right, we understood that.
Yeah, so just like the applicant before you, I guess, you know, you have to figure out if that's a a bonding thing or an actual destruction thing, uh so. That would be up to you to figure out.
Yep.
Sometimes it's a matter of finding something, but correct, the house would have to be taken off.
Yep.
The good news is the gas is readily available because we hid it when we rounded up Newcastle Ave because it was so shallow because it's sitting dry on bedrock. Yep.
Yeah, there was a water shut off in the driveway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of due diligence to do still, I guess, huh, in terms of the water and sewer?
Right.
Driveways, how they're gonna work.
And did we conclude that that is or isn't an intersection?
I don't know.
I would say it's not an intersection.
Right, it doesn't doesn't act like when when you drive there, people just, it's a curve in the road.
There's no other road coming in except the two Humphreys.
There's a driveway that shoots off to the left, I see a car on it in Google.
Yeah, in any section, it would be two different roads.
There you go.
Two different um streets.
Oh, right, right, that's one street, right. Yeah.
So it's not an intersection, or should we just sort of include it?
Doesn't sound like it, no.
Okay. So that issue of forty feet from an intersection.
Might not come into play.
Yeah, only, yeah, isn't an issue for you.
There happened to be a car crash right there. There's a box on a police report that would say, where did it occur? And I have a list of things and some of those things are at an intersection, along a roadway, off shoulder. I would not consider that at an intersection. Sure, is there a box for Harold's house?
Harold's house. Because there probably shouldn't be.
I'll add it, I'll add it. How many feet from Harold's? Well, we kind of got a lot of balls in the air here, right? Anybody wanna say which way we should land this plane or?
I mean, I don't know, the the planning board's gonna weigh in on this one provision about the right angles, um for sure.
Yeah.
Be nice if you could look at, but you can't. It doesn't seem like there's any way to design it with right angles. So you'll have to make that case.
To planning board?
To us and the planning board, but yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Does it make sense to go to a preliminary planning board with that question or not?
I think, I think if you have a strong case, then you can go with it and see what they say, but yeah, I don't, there is a, there's no preliminary planning board process is the problem.
Is preliminary subdivision approved?
Very conceptual.
Preliminary conceptual, but not for subdivision.
They could, they could. So preliminary subdivision applications, or they used to be.
They used to be, they just combined it all now, it seems like. It's still on the books, so I guess you could theoretically, but that's not how they do them.
So we just go in for a conceptual consultation? This is how you do it now, right?
Peter, you're saying that, I guess it's north, that uh property line? Is it uh?
North is up.
Yeah, so the property line on the north side where we have it there, you're saying that should be ninety degrees, it's at it's at an angle now? Is that?
No, no, the subdivision regulations call it for a, they prefer, they call
It's probably something like that.
They call for a right angle lot configuration. So they want the lots to come up at a right angle when you do a subdivision.
Okay.
That's what the subdivision regulations call for. So I think you'll have to make a case that you can't do that. They could say, well, you can, you just have to get a variance, you know.
But if you can't just have a right angle for a foot or two and then an angle? I mean.
It's a language that we have that section.
Yeah, it's uh, it doesn't say you can't do that. I mean, it does say, it doesn't say it has to be exactly a right angle, it's a phenomenally a right angle or something. Yeah, they're gonna read it. It's an interesting shape, but it works with the house designs, you know?
Yeah.
Says the sidelines shall be at right angles to straight street lines, radial to curved street lines. At right angles, right?
Right angles to straight street lines, so.
But that, the diagonal sort is then right on a curve. It's not an intersection.
What do they say about curves?
Radial.
Radial.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a radial.
Right angle to radial, is that what it's saying?
I don't know, what is a radial?
Well, I would
So if you have a curve, a curve has a has a radius point.
That's exactly what that is?
Further, that's correct.
Well, the property line doesn't property line is straight lines. There's no curve in the property.
Exactly.
Right, so it's a, there's no right angle.
Road may be curved, but the property line isn't, so that's kind of a good point.
It's a great one.
We could deed some
So that the street's in the street.
We could deed a curved city.
Yeah, and then the line would be radial.
But then we would be short of lot area.
Yeah, then you'd be nothing to spare.
Well, it depends on the size of the curve.
Fine.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Five square feet.
Five square feet to play with, yeah.
But you could do that. You could put a curve in, so the street's part of the right away now. Right, and then it's radial.
Except we already know your plan now. If you had done it, you'd just try to create the radius for the purpose of being generous to the city or whatever.
Okay, thanks goes on.
Make your case. You have to make your case. Look at the size of your retaining wall.
Yep.
Says you have to get it ready.
Yeah, yeah.
Think about the HTC, you got a bunch of steps. Bunch of chess pieces to move around.
Yeah.
Do you have to have HTC approval before subdivision approval or?
Not necessarily. You can get a conforming lot.
Yep.
But you may not be able to demolish the house if they say you can't demolish the house, so.
That's partly what generated this line is that to give both lots ample room for structure and yard space driveways. So it doesn't conform to the perpendicular nature, but it might be a better solution in terms of the land. Both the topography and creating outdoor space for both units.
It's a tricky one.
So the the diagonal line, lot two, that's already going to be a garage underneath the house that you just drive straight into?
Yeah, for lot two, you'd come up and go in and that's why there's the stairway. And I don't even set the grades perfectly, but um
Yeah.
These, both of these lots are as big as they could possibly be. Our final design will probably be a little smaller than this, um.
Okay, with the the concern of having the driveway off of the west side, if you're already digging that deep into the hill to have a, you know, drive in garage, might be, you know, worth looking into doing that lot line division that was original, because I know the driveway, it seems like you're gonna have to dig out a whole bunch of the land anyway for that
Yes.
accurate garage.
But that driveway is much better than going into the driveway the other way.
Yeah, all right. It just seemed like a lot of the hill needs to come out.
Well, there's no way you decide.
Yeah. Have you guys talked to assessing yet?
No. Just do a sign of number, that's all.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
That's all the business for today, so we'll